Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 14th, 2023 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Knauer.
Knauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyser.
Wyser here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Gray here.
Okay, just for anyone who's here for the public hearing portion of the meeting, the applicant has withdrawn their application, and so we will not be having a public hearing Remains to be seen if they submit at some future date, but the public hearing portion of this meeting is canceled. So if anyone's here for that, you've just found a bunch of time in your schedule, and enjoy. So this will be a work session instead of a bulk hearing. We have minutes from our last meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review them, and can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Doug, you want to take us through our tabled applications?
Yep. So tabled application number one, 1676 Penfield Road, the Flower City Arcade Expansion. We have no new information from the applicant, and so there is no action necessary by the board tonight.
Okay.
Our second tabled application, 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A has officially requested that their application be withdrawn. They'd like to express that their appreciation for everyone's time and energy spent on the project, and they're still excited to pursue opportunities in the future.
Hmm. That's kind of big news. Chick-fil-A withdrew their application. Okay.
So we'll remove that from future agendas. Tabled application number three, 1345 Shoe Craft Road, the Wells Brook subdivision. So we received revised plans on Friday. The revised plans included a tree inventory, as well as, we received a little later, a memo, addendum, to the tree survey with a little bit of additional information. This was something that was requested at the public hearing, that they had to complete a tree survey. Staff is reviewing the plans. One notable item that was submitted with the revised plans is they did include a landscape plan showing buffering to the neighbors on the back of the lots on State Road, as well as the street trees. We do have the applicants in the audience if you have any questions.
Okay. So Bob, this is yours.
Sure. I know Doug and I spoke earlier this week, and I think we would, you know, I reviewed the tree survey, but it would be helpful if the layout and the listing of the trees possibly could be color-coded so we can see on the graphical layout what the impact of, I guess, trees that are dead or need to be removed versus viable trees on the lot.
Like at a quick glance kind of thing?
At a glance at, yeah, a glance at that. And also, we talked about overlaying the actual site plan with the...
With the tree survey?
Properties, yeah, where it's going to be located. And then from there, we can see what trees would remain on the property and which ones would probably be removed. The trees that are dead, possibly trees that are going to interfere with any of the utilities that are put on the site. So we have a good indication of what remains on the property.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Everybody is in agreement with that.
Personally, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Any other, any other concerns that you have on this?
I think that was probably the last, you know, item is seen this survey.
Okay. All right. You know, I know I'll say that the applicant with other developments is, at least from what I've seen, has been pretty good about saving trees, better than a lot of other developers I've seen. You know, a lot of developments have, they've been able to maintain a lot of the, where possible, maintain a lot of mature trees. How's everybody else feel on where the application stands? Jim?
The only question that I have is with respect to the status of the meeting that the developer was wanting to have with the neighbors across the street from the entrance, and, you know, how that, how that came out, whether or not there have been any plans for allaying their concerns for impact to their...
Right. You're talking about the house on the east side of Shoe Craft?
Yep.
Right, where the entrance goes? Okay. Kelly, any?
No.
Terry?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I don't know, Rudy, Mike, if you want to, I don't know if you have any answers or any comments about the questions? If you want to come up and...
Thanks for giving us a few minutes. Thank you again, Board, for your time. Bob, I didn't hear all of your comments, unfortunately, my bad hearing, but I appreciate the time. I'd like to make just a couple of brief comments, and then if there's any technical stuff, of course, Mike is here. I think all of you know the history, but I thought it might be helpful to just give a brief overview on why we're here tonight. So we started this project when Mr. Costello was still in the planning department. I received a call. He said, "Are you interested in a rezoning for this project? The town board is looking at," I think it was three or four, I'm not sure exactly, "but there was a few properties," he said, "and we want to bring them more in compliance with our overall plan for the comprehensive." So I said, "Yeah, absolutely, we'd look at that." So we talked to him a little bit, talked to some staff, what would be good here? Came up with a plan, showed it to the town board, asked us to come in informally, brought a plan. It's substantially what you guys are looking at today, short of the technical details. So we looked at that, got some input from them. They very much like the uses. We need that in the town. They like the senior living. So we were directed then to go to a little bit more formal sketch plan and make our formal application for rezoning to the town board, which, which we did. The project hadn't changed much, got some comments from them, and that was approved. And then we were directed, the next step would be to, of course, come to the planning board, which we did. And you guys are familiar with that part, you were here. So the concept and the idea of the townhouses, as you see them in the senior living, that was brought forth from day one, and nothing has changed. So that was approved by this board, and the only thing, of course, now is we're waiting for comments. And it won't take a lot of time, but all the comments from the staff were addressed. Most of them are perfunctory, so I won't bother with them, but three things that may affect the neighbors that you folks might want to know. The one comment was brought out about the, my neighbor, I think, Jim, you might have brought that out, they wanted to know about how would we buffer them. I spoke with her at our town, or our office meeting that we had, obviously willing to work with her and mitigate it. I spoke with her again after the concept hearing. Her and her husband said, "Let's meet on the property. I'm available anytime. They have my cell number." And whatever's, they have quite a number of trees there now. So they're, whatever you guys feel within reason would enhance it, whether it's a fencing, a tree. So we've talked to them and are very willing to make them happy. Also, that same comment was brought about, are we going to have a issue with snow plowing? No. Our HOA mandates that all snow plowing would come from Shoe Craft Road into ours and, and never out. And the last comment she was worried about was, would there be 24 ugly mailboxes at the entrance? And the answer to that again is no, because the mailboxes are inside the project. We do have a photograph, I don't know if you have to see it, I happen to have one with me too, but it's basically a mailbox stand. It's internal to the project. We don't even get to decide where it goes. The post office comes and dictates that. But, so those three comments that may affect my neighbors, I thought were interesting. And then I wanted to just briefly talk about this tree survey. I know that's, that's a big issue, and I looked at it, studied it, and I asked the tree experts at BME to condense this down for me, so it, it made more sense than 1,000 little dots on the tree. So here, here was the numbers that were important to me. The survey was conducted, remember, Board, for the entire 14 acres. About 22% of that does not really affect this application, but we thought it would make more sense to look at the whole thing, and then we can break pieces out of it. So with that said, the total number of trees that qualified for, for the tree survey based on your standards was, where's my number, 698 trees. They were eight inches or bigger, good, bad, or dead. We counted them all, so 698 trees. And this was an important one to me. They broke down, I think you do have a memo on this. Healthy trees that they labeled a one or a healthy tree that either wasn't broken, a good, about what we said, 80% of them were ash trees, but they, healthy trees were 82 total for the entire acreage. And if we break out the senior living piece, that's 56 healthy trees on the property that would be removed based on the layout. Another something, a piece that was interesting to me, because of 278, what's the benefit? Why did we go that direction that we were going? We ended up with about two plus or minus acres of buffered area, and that was important to me. I said that right from the beginning. My neighbors want it. If we went with a conventional plan, there'd be, there'd be nothing left. And of course, I know we'd still have to mitigate the trees. So I went Monday, I got back from Florida Monday, and I walked this myself, the entire perimeter that was going to be saved, and I want, how many trees are going to be left? So I counted them. The majority are not large ones. There is a few. They're young saplings, three to four, six-inch trees, and there's about 700, a little more, but I wanted to be conservative. There's about 750 trees that will remain on this property when we're done. And that didn't count shrubbery, bushes, native things that, that's in there. And the way the property is, just so you folks can get a view of it, we're basically, all our surrounding neighbors are higher, and it comes down to us. So we don't have any issues. When you leave a stand of trees or woods, if it's a negative pitch, I've got to do something with that water. But everybody's water comes to us, so we won't need to get equipment around that perimeter at all. All that native vegetation, including those 750 trees, will be able to stay there, short of trimming some dead branches, that, that kind of thing. And lastly, we know we have to comply with your street tree policy, and if you've been to any of my tracks, I have far exceeded that street tree policy every, every time, not because it was mandated, but that's the look we wanted. And we also will go on record, we've, we've done a little study, that's, that depiction of, to my neighbor there, Jim, that you commented on, to the, to the north, that's not exactly how we'll do it, and we do have photographs, if you'd want to see them, but we just finished a project in Parenton, very similar to this. The only difference was from the edge of gutter to the property line was only 20 feet. And we did a really nice job with a combination of trees, fencing, and then deciduous trees. So we're already committing to an additional 50 trees on this site for benefit of my neighbors, the purpose, and, and buffering everything. So that's our understanding of it, and we are obviously just waiting for direction on exactly how you would like us to proceed. Hope that was brief enough, but I thought it was important.
Okay, no, thank you. Mike, do you have any comments on?
No, Rudy actually did a really good job.
Summarizing all this, all the stuff we looked at, the, obviously, like Rudy said, the tree survey was the important stuff, but he did a good job breaking down some of that information that we were, we'll glean out of that, just number of trees, so to speak. And then, like you said, the important piece is that there are a number of smaller trees that, in the remaining buffer area, that are to remain, that we just didn't count as part of the requirement of the tree survey, based on the sizing. It's a lot of smaller stuff, but it does count. And then I think one of the initial comments was that to just do the site plan overlay, which we, I don't have initial work with Rudy to make sure we address that. I think we can do some type of exhibit to depict that, so to speak.
Okay. And then on that, too, with the overlay, designate the trees that are on the site right now, which ones would remain?
Mm-hmm.
You know, to the best of your knowledge.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
Let me clarify that. So this was done, every tree that's supposed to be on the survey is on here. Are you talking about the little saplings and brush and bushes?
No.
That stays?
Um, no, I don't think we really...
We want to have the right thing for you.
Have a concern for, it's the larger caliber trees.
Okay, which would?
The ones, the healthy ones. Obviously, some of them are going to have to be removed.
Right.
For the footprint of the houses and the utilities and so forth, but I think it would be helpful if we saw which ones were remaining.
Good. The, the, if you look on your grading plans, and we can, we can also sketch that, and if you'd like, the perimeters that are shown on the grading plan are specific to exactly what's staying. So we can add that line to that overlay, too, if that's helpful to you guys, and then we just, based on your tree study, I've read it all over, pretty familiar with it, your, your rules and regulations on that. We're just waiting for the Board to determine how we're going to mitigate the trees that do have to come down.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
So do you guys want to, two additional steps we can take. Do you want to send this to Bruce, our landscape consultant, for his review? We can send the landscaping plan and the tree survey, and at least get some feedback from Bruce?
I guess it can't hurt. It might have been something that we, we got this in on Friday, so...
Yeah, yeah, we just, we just got the tree survey, and that's, and along with the landscaping plan, there wasn't a landscaping plan with the original submission, because they were waiting until the tree survey was completed to draft.
Yeah. Yeah, probably can't hurt for his input.
Right, on both, right, the landscape plan?
Landscape plan and the tree survey?
Yeah.
And then the other one was, the Conservation Board has now merged with one of the other committees. It's the Energy and Environmental Conservation Committee. Would we want to, does the Board want to send this application to EECC for a report? Review and a report?
I believe that was done.
I think we did, we did send the original sketch plan back when, when, when we had it as a sketch plan. I believe we sent the sketch plan off to EECC.
But now you got the tree survey.
But now we have the tree survey and a preliminary final application.
That's, that's really the, the big value.
Yes.
Having them look at that and having that part of our approval record.
Okay. I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't, I don't necessarily want to unduly create...
Their next meeting is January 11th.
January 11th. They meet, they meet the same day we do, just before, so they meet at 4:30 on our public hearing minutes.
I mean, we have a memo from them by then? Like, I mean, do they create it that day? Or, I mean, is this something that's going to...
Considering this is a project that they've already reviewed and wrote a report for, I would think that we can, you know, provide them the materials and, because the turnaround for the report that they had before was essentially, we provided them the materials at that meeting, and then at their next meeting, they have the report. So it's supposed to be feasible for them to, you know, finalize their report at their meeting, and then you would have it for your public hearing, but that again, you would have that report at the next meeting, that'd be the first time that you would see it.
And it's unlikely they'd be drafting a new report. They would likely just do an addendum.
Sure, yes.
Or revision of their existing standing report.
Okay. How's everybody feel about that?
I think with the survey, if they've already done the preliminary report, it shouldn't take, you know, too much just to update their comments.
Right. I would only mention that, you know, Bob's comments of having that report with the outlier knowing which trees would remain, that would, you know, potentially be something that the committee would want to look at, too. So that would be something that they would want to consider, just from my experience with them.
Doug, is it possible to attend the conservation, if it's, if it's the same night as the planning board meeting, is it, or same day, is it possible to attend the Conservation Board meeting? So that way, we just hear the comments?
Yes, yep.
Hear the discussion, and then be able to come to this meeting?
Yes.
Just so we're not...
Yeah, their meetings are open to the public as well.
That was my question, if that won't hold up to January meeting, depending on what they say.
If it is going to get another round of review by the Conservation Board, then I wouldn't want to have to hold up Rudy to wait another meeting to get the, their comments formalized, so to speak. But at least if we're able to go to that meeting and hear their comments, then we can come to the planning board, too, and at least discuss them with the planning board.
Right. Does that make sense to members?
Yeah, we can forward along their meeting information. They meet second Thursday at 4:30 in the same room we're in.
And we'll expedite the overlays as quick as possible, so everybody can get a good...
Right.
I just want to be clear on this overlay. Easy to do, but we're not going to go back through the exercise of trying to show those 750 little dots that remain. We'll just show a line that says, "Remaining trees and vegetation." Is that acceptable to what you guys are looking at? Just so we have the right stuff for you.
Isn't it possible, I mean, is this in the same program as this?
Mm-hmm.
So aren't they actually different layers in the CAD or Revit or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I would think that it's like checkboxes on the screen to say, hey, include this layer, include this layer, or, I mean, I may be oversimplifying to a, to a degree, but not to a huge degree?
It's not a huge degree, AJ, but, yeah, it takes a little bit of work, obviously, but the, just for, our intent was to try to just keep it as clear as possible without turning on all the trees and all the development.
Right, because all of a sudden, you're just looking at this massive...
Otherwise, you're looking at a massive...
Information on the page that you can't discern.
Exactly, so...
And just, just turn on the, turn on the trees that you feel would remain.
Can you sort them by number? Like, can you, are they layered? So you have like one through four or something? Or is there a layer for one, two, three, and four?
There could be.
Well...
We can, I mean, we can, we can split out...
Is and could be are two totally different questions.
We can split out, we can turn on, if there, if the intent, what I would want to know is what the Board would want to see. I mean, we can, we could show, we have the information, we could show what you want on the plan at the end of the day. If it's just the trees to remain on the proposed grading plans, or on the landscape plan, so to speak, then we could do that. We could just take the tree survey as it stands and overlay the proposed development area, or just the clearing limits, if you'd like to see it that way. It's, it's up to the Board and how they want to see it.
What he's asking for, I think, is, is really...
Yeah.
Not that big of a load, because you're talking about 80% of the trees are going to be gone anyhow, and of the remaining trees, some of those have to go.
Correct.
Because they're in the footprint, they're, they're in the utility right of ways, so there, there's not a ton of trees there. And I, and I think that would be helpful to the Conservation Board.
Sure.
And I think it would be helpful to the public to see...
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm not trying to, I, I, you know, I want what's like a reasonable thing, not a, oh geez, I spent, you know, six weeks, you know?
No, no, no. And what I, what you guys are discussing seems reasonable to me, at least.
Yeah, I just want to, if I'm sitting in your guys' chair, and I always think that way when I'm making presentations, obviously, would it make sense, in, in your regulations, dead, dying, or diseased trees in the EPOD district can be removed? Would it make sense to put the 82 trees that are labeled healthy on this overlay? And now we see, do we really care for cutting down dead ash trees? You're going to have, you know, hundreds of dots?
No, right, exactly.
If we put the 82, by the experts, 82 good trees are here, and we're going to take, I don't know, 50 of those we have to destroy, now tell me how to mitigate. Is that what I'm hearing? That's easy to do.
Not a lot of trees left.
Yeah.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty easy...
Yeah, so we'll, every tree labeled one, which is a healthy...
One and two.
Just one is healthy, but...
My thought is, there's certain trees that are on there.
I counted every healthy tree, so maybe it was one and two.
All right, Mike?
My thought is, there's trees that have been labeled, you know, silver maples that have broken branches. Well, I have broken branches on my silver maples. Doesn't mean that they're dying or whatever.
Right.
So I think there's a line, sure, if it's a dead ash tree, I would get rid of it, but I'm thinking everything else needs to be on there. Even, I mean, cottonwood's a horrible tree, too, so it's up to the Board to make that determination if they care about cottonwood trees. But I'm thinking if there's tree, I don't want just to see just the healthy trees, because there's five healthy trees, when there's actually 82 or 100...
Whatever the number is.
That just have some broken branches that could be trimmed or whatever. So I think the Board should consider that as well.
Okay.
That's why I was saying, having Bruce look at the tree survey, so that he can get, you know, a memo to you guys to say, you know, I would say 90% of these trees are shot, and it's okay to remove them. You know, that's why I think it'd be beneficial for that.
Okay. I, I, that, I think that's a reasonable comment.
So that, that changes that a little. So we want to put the healthy trees, which are the one and two, plus?
I think we're talking about two different things. So having our landscape consultant, who has expertise with trees, look at the tree survey to see that he agrees with how they've been categorized. I think that is a, I think it is a valid exercise, and we typically ask him to look at those kinds of...
Makes sense.
Elements of your submission anyhow, and the landscape plan.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely...
I mean, a dead ash tree is a dead ash tree, it's coming down anyways.
Yeah, but a tree surgeon wouldn't look at an otherwise healthy tree that has broken branches and categorize that as...
Is dead.
Has to be moved down. And like AJ said, and like he's, I mean, he's, he's been here for many years, he doesn't want to take down trees.
Right.
He wants to keep as many trees as he can.
Mm-hmm.
Makes the development better.
For sure.
Right.
So you need to wait for, or communicate with Bruce before you do the overlay, and then... And then if it's the 82 healthy trees, and Bruce says, "I like these ten, too," then that's what you show. No sense showing dead trees on this overlay.
Yeah, I guess those are good questions. Are we clear on what we're asking for right now?
So, the way I can summarize it in, you know, tabling resolution would be... So, one is the overlay, which shows trees labeled one and two.
Trees to remain.
Yeah.
Trees to remain.
In relation to how the development's occurring. So, having the site plan and the overlay show where the healthy trees are in relation to how the development's occurring. And then the second would just be providing the current trees inventory to Bruce for his review.
And I guess the only other clarity is, they've offered to, on that plan, continue to show the delineation of vegetation
Right.
because you wouldn't want... You wouldn't want the neighbors to think that that's suddenly going to be clear cut.
Right.
Right.
So, you could probably, if I might, based on those two comments, show what we say is all the healthy trees. Prepare it however you can make it simple. Show the buffer, and then Bruce will have something to walk around and say, "Hey, yeah, I agree with these guys," or, "Hey, they missed something."
That's feasible, yeah, that's fine.
They took pretty... Quite a long time to do it, and that gentleman from the state that wrote his report, he was with them, too. He's an older gentleman, loves trees more than he loves people. Didn't always agree with their assessment. He'd find little... But I suggest, you know, just roll with it. So, it was pretty intensely done, but we'd love to have Bruce's eyeball on it, and we can prepare that.
Okay. So, with that, I mean, all of that said, we can start preparing a resolution for consideration?
I think that, you know, providing everything falls into place, at least start on a draft resolution.
Are you comfortable with how the development stands as a 278 cluster subdivision right now with the 23 lots as proposed, knowing that there will be a future development on the remaining acreage?
That all was part of the sketch?
Correct.
So, it was brought forward and presented as something that was going to be a future proposed development? So, I guess in that sense, yes.
Okay.
Because we did make the determination that this... The 278 plan was more... If I want to say advantageous, or a better, more appropriate plan than the conventional one.
Okay.
From a layout, buffering, limiting areas of disturbance standpoint.
Okay.
So... Is everybody else comfortable with that assessment? Terry?
Yeah. I'll go with it, yeah.
Kelly? Jim? Bob? Okay? All right, so...
Yeah. Continue tabling it until we get the information back from Bruce and EECC, along with the two items that we've discussed, to have them provided in response?
Yeah.
I'll move that we continue table per our discussion.
Yeah, and to start drafting the...
And at least start a draft of the approval resolution pending what we talked about.
Okay.
I'll second. Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Board.
Appreciate the input, and then...
We'll work through that. I'm looking forward to seeing it. I will be back for the meeting. And I'm excited about making this a special place. Thank you, everybody, for your volunteer time on this board for us, the developers, and the residents. I don't think they appreciate how much this board does for the town of Penfield. So, on their behalf, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good holidays.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I had for you guys tonight.
Anybody else have any new business or announcements or anything? All right, well, that said, we will adjourn. And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Festivus, or whatever anyone celebrates. Happy holidays, and see you next year.